Thank you. Mr. Fraser?
Here.
Mr. for Catherine.
Here.
Mr. Land?
Yeah.
Mr. Moss?
Here.
Mr. Seymour?
Here.
Mr. Seiver?
Here.
Ms. Jordan?
Is here.
You have seven numbers present. Thank you. First item on our agenda is the request to New Soul Garden. Thank you. The attached application is from New Soul Garden. They're requesting a transfer ownership of a resort Class C and FCM license from GY Chung, New Soul Garden, to I think it's Yan L Lim, Soul Garden of Southfield. All the necessary paperwork and documents have been reviewed by the appropriate department, and it is recommended that council approve the transfer of the liquor license request. The attorney, Mr. Tabaka, and also the owner is present in the case council. Any questions?
We're looking for Rule 10.
We're looking for Rule 10 so we can go up to the other side. Thank you.
Yeah, Ms. Banks, would you like to... Is this...the name is...they're still incorporating the name New Soul Garden, is that correct? It's part of the new name?
Um, I believe...yes. I think that it's going to be New Soul Garden of Southfield when it's incorporated.
But it's a different owner.
That's correct. It's a new owner.
Trying to keep the identity of it.
That's correct.
Okay. Just want to make sure.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Great.
Yeah, um, in reading the material, do I get this right? They're selling or leasing the restaurant, but they're also leasing a house? Is their house involved in this too?
I think I would defer that to the attorney.
Uh, they have...
Can you come up to the mic and use your name and business address for the question?
Are you the owner of it? Council members, my name is Al Tabaka, T-A-B-A-K-A. And this is Yan Lim. She is the owner or purchaser. Uh, she...her name, I kid her a little bit, but she's Yan Lim Lim. She's got a limb twice.
Okay.
Anyway, the question that was raised was on a home. Yes, they rent a home. Uh, as they need to, sometimes they have people who are working for them, you know, with resides.
Oh, because it seems a little odd that...
No, I said unusual, uh, what the situation where a lot of these people do not speak Aegonish at all. They're mostly of a Korean ancestry that are here for special services.
Okay. I just wondered if I was reading it right.
No, you were, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, Count?
I move a real time.
To support.
We have a motion by Councilman Seiver, supported by Councilman Moss, to...for Rule 10 for the license, all in favor. Any opposed? Motion here.
Then I move the liquor license transfer for New Soul Garden.
Support.
There's a motion by Councilman Seiver, supported by Councilman Fraser, to approve the liquor license. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Good luck.
Thank you.
We hope.
Yes.
Good place, come on over.
Welcome. All right, now time on our agenda, Jonah, Jonah, Tony, and acting and the price point discussion.
Good evening. As you, the council may recall, this item, enactment of ordinance number sixteen seventeen was on your agenda last week, which was postponed until tonight for further discussion on the residential portion of the site plan. Per your direction, a site plan committee meeting was held earlier this afternoon at four thirty. The items were discussed in detail, and the site plan committee made a recommendation to move the acting on the residential portion of the site plan until December sixteenth. However, we're here tonight with the owner and applicant, Mr. Ark and Jonah, to review with the full council the changes that have been made specifically to the residential portion of the plan, and to update the council on the amendments that were made as condition of approve on the commercial portion of the plan. And planning staff, Mr. Spencer and myself, will be here to answer any questions that the council may have after Mr. Jonah's presentation.
And just for the record, again, the name of business. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Ark and Jonah, AF Jonah Development, forty thirty-six Telegraph, Blue Ford Hills, Michigan.
Give it a couple of moments. Give it a couple of moments. I'm gonna...
We have a little light on.
I'm gonna turn the other one.
Yeah, I can't.
Does that work?
No, that's fine.
I think we're bad. Well, this is a full site plan of what we had planned and what we had brought in front of you several times before. The main changes that we've made are in the...as in the residential portion, where we've taken where we had five buildings and to develop one hundred and twenty units of apartments, we've downsized to three buildings, creating more open space and more green area. We've gotten rid of, I think we had about ten variances that we needed. We've eliminated all but three that we need for the development of this. One of these variances would be the development of the garages that would separate the retail portion from the residential, and using that as a screening wall buffer as opposed to just a screening wall. The second is a density issue where how many rooms we have versus how much land we own. And the third was the variance of setbacks for this building only because it busts up to the residential and the balance blood busts up to a commercial. We've dressed up all the landscaping and buffered in the areas where the residential meets. We've reworked the...we've eliminated those concerns about this strip of land that we own right here that's adjacent to the Southfield Funeral Home parking lot. We've made do without any of the...without any of the development of parking in there. We've created big parcels of green space at both ends, in the pool and the clubhouse in the middle of the residential development. This is just showing the retail portion, showing the plaza and all the connections in between the sidewalks along both Southfield and Twelve Mile, and connecting them and making it passage of things walking friendly. There were concerns of how the landscaping along both Southfield and Twelve Mile. Every...if you look at the entranceway along Southfield, the walkways between where we're going to connect the sidewalk, the plaza area, and this sidewalk, and at the entrance here, what we've created was sections. This is a walkway, and this is the ride iron with columns that would be different than the rest of the...to break up the rest of the landscaping that's along both Southfield and Twelve Mile. We've created berms, made it meandering, so that there's a section of the ride iron and the columns, bushes, and the burmin, so that we could break up the landscape, so it's not one continuous row of landscaping, so we have different sections of it. At the corner, we've hired a different architect to look at how we can maintain some of the same deeds ambiance in the church. Basically, what we've come up with is a plaza. This would be at the corner, in certain areas of the corner, where we would take and create a structure that mimics the same deeds building. We'd be using all the same bricks off the building to create the plaza area. We looked at the idea of creating it out of the copper that's on the building. We've decided against that simply because we don't think it would last very long at the corner.
So, you know, here's a different views of it.
This would be at the corner, and we'd do something to create a little dedication to the same deeds church itself. There's another...you know, the steps we've got. This would be a seating area. Really well done. This is an elevation of the retail buildings itself. We've made no changes there. These are elevations of the residential units. We've gone with a contemporary look just to offset it from what is...what we have in the rest of the city. There's the clubhouse, the connection between the gated area between the retail and the residential, and different interior perspective. We've chose to go with a little bit more contemporary here, just simply because the product is not available anywhere in the market. We feel we can capture that upscale, the better paying residential tenant to be a part of this. This is the elevation of the proposed Applebee's. This will be the first of its kind built in the state of Michigan. This is a prototype that has yet been built in the state, using basically the same materials, the brick, the stacked stone, to mimic what we were doing with our retail. Is there any questions? I'd be more than happy to ask.
Yeah, I just want to clarify what our process is as we're going forward tonight. And I guess I have a question for the city attorney, because as we stayed at the last meeting, we have passed the zoning for both. We have passed the site plan for the commercial, and we're...what...we are discussing the site plan for the residential.
Right, and that would be formally on the agenda for December sixteenth. It's just a study session.
Okay.
But we also know that the enactment was postponed till today, so there could be a Rule 10 if council were inclined, and the enactment could occur today.
Okay.
Of the rezoning.
Okay. And then my other question is, I just...planner to the chair of the site plan committee, what...is there a brief synopsis that happened at site plan that the rest of us could...
Basically, Mr. Jonah spent in detail going through the residential portion of the site plan. He reviewed the original nine waivers and discussed in length the three that are remaining. He talked about how they eliminated the need for any parking waivers, the separation between the buildings, the front yard setback. By moving the clubhouse out of that little notch, that takes away a bunch of waivers. One item that Mr. Jonah didn't bring up that the site plan committee did at least discuss was early on, there was some garages located on the north end. Mr. Jonah eliminated that because it would need a waiver. However, the site plan committee thought that that might be a good idea to have those garages reinstalled on the north end and would at least in favor support any waiver. Obviously, it's given by the Zone Board of Appeals, but I think, Ms. Seymour mentioned it would help provide some enclosure and some security by having the garages there and then walls extending across the northern property. So that was the one additional item. Mr. Jonah also updated the council site plan committee on the three amendments to the commercial plan that were part of the approval, which he discussed in detail, the corner. Urban Plaza will open up as a pedestrian connection, the monument, and then the separation and landscaping along the edges.
Okay. At this point, I'm definitely comfortable with the changes, and I hope that this can get to council.
Compliment. Right.
So how many apartments do we still have, a hundred and eight?
Yes, we have.
Okay. I am disappointed to see the garages on the north end block. I think for this type of development, that every apartment, there isn't a garage potentially for every apartment, and I think that's a selling point. Again, if I lived on the third floor of your building, I would want a garage that I could put things in, like my bicycle, that I wouldn't have to schlep up and down the stairs, or if it's a gardener next door at the community garden, I'd want to leave my tools in the garage. I mean, there's all kinds of things that...I just...I think the loss of the garages is a detriment, and I know you wanted them, but I would support the garage.
Senator Chair, if I may...
Yeah.
We made a couple of changes to the site plan that we took from you and having a bicycle. What do you do with that bicycle? We actually changed the type of building that we're building at the western end, where this building, this building, both these buildings have garages at the end. They each have six garages built into the building. So we've eliminated the need for more parking spaces. So what we've done with the garages that we have along the eastern end, we widened those garages by two feet each, so that you could put your bicycle and your gardening tools with them. The only thing that...I mean, we were dealing with variances of...we didn't want to have that many variants to deal with. I agree that this is a good thing to have as far as amenities to the residential unit. We're looking to do an upscale product, and the upscale product warrants that garage.
Yes, I agree. So how many...how many garages then do you have now for this one?
Jeff?
You don't have a hundred and eight.
We don't have a hundred and eight.
Yeah. Well, while Jeff is counting, let me...what about...I know before there was...and I believe where our parking requirements are too stringent, that we require more parking than need. So what is now the final thing? I know you don't need a waiver on parking, but what is the number of spaces that are required, number of spaces provided?
For the whole complex, I believe we're...
I can give you those numbers, if I may, to your original question, we're seventy-six garages right now. That is minus...
Figured we could add twenty garages if there were one thing. And then we double-checked the parking count.
Yeah, with regards to the parking, for the multiple family, two hundred and sixty-nine spaces are required. There's two...six...two hundred and sixty-three provided.
Okay.
So that's on this property right here. So that comes up six short, at least on this property right here. For the commercial, three hundred and twenty-three are required, three hundred and forty-six are provided on the commercial portion. That actually gives us excess of seventeen spaces total if you put both numbers together. So there's seventeen more parking spaces that are required for the entire development. And we thought, based on some reconfiguration, we could probably gain a space or two on the residential portion, plus we haven't given the full credit if we'd like to for bike parking, so there is a little bit of room. But basically, overall, we're in excess of parking. We're just technically six short on the residential.
And the retail will have the required bike parking, correct? And there's a credit for that, and that includes the restaurant, correct?
Right.
Will it be a bike parking for both the restaurant and the...
Yeah, right now, we've just taken the minimum one bike parking credit for each development, but we could go up to five percent in theory. We've never done that. However, there is room for probably additional space or two, given the total number of parking spaces, and we would want to encourage that.
And I'm having trouble on seeing on here, where is the restaurant dumpster?
The restaurants all...the dumpster, we use a compactor that's going to be right here, and that services all of the...
The whole...okay.
Yes.
Great. I didn't see that. Then what is...I commend you on the landscaping plan. It looks very attractive. I think it addressed concerns that were...that were brought up earlier. And how about the space between the two retail buildings?
Space between the two retail...we should have blown it up. We've got approximately fifteen feet that's between here. And depending on the use, one of these two ends is going to be a restaurant. So what we'll do, we'll hardscape all of this in between and create outdoor seating for one of the two sides with a walk-through, going through to connect the east and the west with...
Okay. Those are my questions, certainly in favor of us and moving the enactment of the ordinance.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council, any other questions? Council, please. Questions with others?
I'm figuring out one point about the parking. I was concerned about shared parking for the apartment residents who might be coming in alone at night, and I didn't want them to be, you know, have to come in from a commercial area into their apartment. And I think we covered that pretty well, that was the limit of parking. I have to say, I like this plan, and I...it's a vast improvement, I think, to the layout on the other one. It's not jammed, it's not crowded, it's very...very nicely organized, and I said that to Mr. Jonah at the site plan committee. It's a vast improvement. I like the changes that were made. We all did. I do have a question about whether or not we really need an apartment or apartments in this city. And we have, I think, sixty-five different...sixty-five or sixty-nine complexes in the city, and a lot of them have appealed and taxes because of vacancies, and that was a concern to me that we might be overbuilding. We have a lot of apartments in this city, more than I think most other cities. So I did express that concern as to whether this was really needed, and I asked for, as sure of the finance committee, I asked the administrator to provide us a list of the complexes and the appeals that were just, I think, counseling to notice, the appeals that were made by the various complexes, and then we passed that out. I do question really whether we need...I mean, I want this to succeed, don't misunderstand me, but if it doesn't, if for some reason it doesn't, and these apartments don't get rented, then we all have a problem. That was one issue. My other issue was the commercial, and Mr. Jonah went into great detail to explain what he was trying to do. There had been talk about resale or secondhand stores wanting to come in there, and that was a concern to, I guess, it kind of went around some areas of the community, and that was a concern that that would downgrade the quality of this center, because as well known, this is the last, really, the only, the last large, only ten acres, but large commercial site that we have in the city, and I'm not counting the city center because that's the local owner, but this is such an important location. We want it to be the very best that we can get, and we want it to be something that's going to be the highest level, unless you don't understand us. So there were concerns about what types of businesses would go in there, and I'm going to ask him if he would go into some of that about how his process about getting these businesses. And then the...you know, I'm not fond of the modernist design, but if it works, it works, and we've had that discussion. So I just want to hand out to the council the...what we have in terms of the complexes and the ones that have made appeals on their taxes, so that everybody knows. Let's pass those around. Mr. Fraser, if you'll...please phone, and pass those on. Just so that we're all...we all have the same information, I am concerned that we might be overbuilding, but that's...Mr. Jonah wants this to succeed, we want it to succeed. We really don't want to have something that doesn't, but is successful, and I'm sure he's convinced me that he really needs it. So just so you have that information, we have, what is it, sixty-nine, sixty-seven, sixty-nine, sixty-five apartments in the city, and thirty-six were under appeal as of January one, two thousand and thirteen. So that's a lot of...that means, and when they're appealing their taxes, they're doing that based on vacancies. So when people talk about demand for new apartments, I guess that's an interpretation. Do we really need...is there a demand for more apartments with all those vacancies? Different views on that, but I just wanted that to be on the table for something that we always do know that we...because of vacancies, when we get to river around the city and seen all the signs and told the apartment complexes offering resident bonuses for referrals of new tenants, that's something we haven't had in my memory. The last year, we've had a lot of those, so there are vacancies.
Uh, Councilman for Catherine.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I want to go back to last Monday when I was not in favor of the enactment of the ordinance because it included P one, P two, and RMM. And the reason that I started having to put off so that the site plan could be submitted for council to see what the site plan would look like on the RMM keys, we went through this site plan committee. I think this is a wonderful development and a big change in what was there. I think that the quality of apartments, the quality of apartments, they have a great location, and then it's close to shopping, two cities adjacent...three cities adjacent to Southfield would be fortunate by automobile and even often, and that excites shopping in this little center that's here. So there's really advantage to the location for the quality of life that is being presented tonight. Mr. Seiver and I talked about the apartment, or the garages to the north, and they were removed from the site, and we asked the petitioner if he would add those, and it would be an additional need to get approved by the Board of Appeals. And I stated that we'd also try to send message to council that we recommend that that change and variance be made so that we get the garages, additional garages to the north, and so there's really parking to parking, and the wall would be not be the same as having the garage. Today, garages are very important to people who live in homes as it is in apartments. They like to keep their cars covered, they like to keep them protected, they like to keep things in storage, and not be an eyesore to those who live in the apartment, so we're really available to those people who are in apartments. So I think that this is a great change in what was originally presented. I...I think one recommended it from the site plan committee, and I would hope that we would move on that tonight, because I stated that if we send a site plan on RMM, that I'd be in favor going forward on that enactment, which was P one, P two, and RMM. I would like to emphasize that we... I, I would like to emphasize that, that, that we, as part of we do approve the enactment of this, that we do accept the site plans from sixteen, we do help out by sending a note to the zoning board of appeals because of the fact that this will add an amenity to the equality of life within that development, which also helps to see the Southfield. And, and that because it adds to the quality of life as well as to the development, that I for one would be in favor of sending a message to zoning board of appeals. Not only for this one, but for this, how many more are there, Jerry, two or two? Besides the one on the garages, you have two or three?
Oh, there's three, three others.
Three, so it'd be four?
Four total.
Three total.
But two, two of which deal with the garage wall issues.
And so anyways, council, I am in favor of this going forward in the enactment tonight.
I'm the real pen.
No, 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 no.
All right.
Uh, Councilman Lance.
John made a remark as, you know, over, over building apartments. I don't see where the comparison is with these new apartments with the existing complexes today. The existing complex in the Rock City, I have a little one.
That's one.
And these new apartments are absolutely modern. I would like to move in one.
We'll make you a deal.
But I know, I made us up to the environment. Anyway, you can't prepare new apartments. You just knew they lay on the old existing stuff.
I'll take the, to a, a couple of things.
Yeah. Mr. Jones, if you would talk a little bit about the commercial discussion that we had because there were, there were concerns about a secondhand store that had been circulating. And there were concerns about how do we, we stressed how important this was to our community because it's the last really good commercial site, the location is so important. And you went into quite a few details to how you would attract some quite kind of retail. Because that's extremely important here, extremely.
Madam Chair. You spoke of how this is the, one of the last large pieces that's available in Southfield. We knew that six, seven years ago when we had this under contract. We own this property today. That's how convinced we are of how good an intersection this is. As far as developing this property and leasing this property, in order for us to keep this property as upscale as possible, you know, the secondhand side, I don't know where that movement came from. I know that the Goodwill people have been looking in the area. They can't afford our rents here. How we lease our properties and how we keep our properties occupied is, the majority of our tenants come from within our portfolio. We have centers that, all over South East Michigan. And we'll do an email blast to all the tenants. And we'll fill better than half of this, this shopping center from within our portfolio. The second, we go, there's a tier of tenants. We go to the corporate tenants, we go to the regional corporate tenants. Then we go to the independents that have one, two, or three stores already. And we, you know, and there's a trick in the shopping center industry where, where we believe that the less, if you build less, you get more. There is a specific size where if you broach, broach that size, the shopping center may be too big for all the small tenants. And it's too small for all the big tenants to come in. You know, we're not going after the tenants that are up the street of Southfield and twelve and a half mile road where you've got the big clothing people that have ten, twelve, fifteen thousand. We're not looking for that at all. We're, we're looking to make it a boutique, a very upscale neighborhood service oriented tenants here. And we, this is what we do. We can fill this in, we can fill this up without even, without, I'll bet you we don't even have to put up a sign here to fill this up. They only got to sign up. Um, if there are any questions, that, you know.
Yes, I just want to say, when I first, when we first started talking about this and I went on the website and looked up all of these locations that you have. And I think it was, I believe it was Wickson that seemed that we were lower scale. Correctly, I'm wrong in the city, but it seems to me that Wickson had had some lower scale developments. And I just, I think we all want to have the best that we can possibly have here because-
We don't own anything worth it.
Well, maybe, I, I, like I said, I could be wrong. This was weeks ago that I looked this up. But it was one of your, one of your developments.
Well, you know, we have, you know, over thirty years of development, these, these old properties. I own a shopping center at Seven East Ratchet. I own a shopping center in Grand River and Greenfield. They're not all the same, but we try to, I can tell you one thing. Our centers, for the most part, are overall probably ninety-nine percent occupied. We run a very, very, very attractive occupancy rate.
I guess what, 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 um, what makes sense here, and I'm sure this is what you're trying to do, is you want an upscale type of tenant, you want an upscale type of apartment. So you want the same thing in the commercial that was compatible with that.
Absolutely.
That's just all, that's all I wanted to hear. Um, thank you, Fraser.
Mr. Lance, I want you to be prepared for shock, because I agree with you. I agree with you that, I agree with you that even though there are tenant wanted signs out in front of apartment complexes now and that they're appealing their taxes, when this gets built, they'll probably still be there. Because the folks that will be going into this wouldn't be looking at the places that are appealing their taxes. And besides that, I think maybe if we were real honest with ourselves, maybe some of the ones that we have already need to go out of business. Because they're out of date and they haven't kept up with the times. And they're still collecting rent, but they're not, they're not the kind of apartment complexes that we would really like if we're looking for folks to call this a place, a place that they can be proud of. So I commend you on this. If you had my vote before, it would even get better now.
Thank you.
I'd like to say just thank you for your patience. I know this council put, put some fire upon you in terms of how we wanted it to look with the landscaping and the bumpers and really presenting a quality piece. And I think you've done that with this development. I think we've heard council's concerns and we've responded to it. And that's what makes it, that's why I'm in favor of it. Because what I keep in mind is a very nice development. And I think it can really add to that corner of the city. I really like your respect for the St. Pete's Church and that old landscaping, that old piece that you got on the end. And I think this is, this is something that we can all be proud of. So thank you for not, you know, turning your back, not giving in, not saying, you know, council's not open for business. I think you proved it tonight that we are. Because you were a developer that stayed with the St. Pete's Church.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It goes both ways. We like to think we know what we're doing, but, you know, there's always room to learn and do better. So the concern is really the same as mine. Thank you.
You're done there. And so, just, you had mentioned, Mr. Cassie, that maybe sending something from the council to the VBA indicating that you would be in favor of those waivers and I'd just like to kind of caution against that. You know, the zoning board of appeals has standards and those are legal standards. And they're supposed to measure their, what is in front of them in terms of the request for waivers against those standards. And for council to say, we're in favor of this, when, you know, you have a role in them having that seat in the first place, I think it's just something that maybe, it, it's just, you maybe have, you know, gone too far in terms of any kind of undue pressure on them. They're supposed to do their job under the guidance of the law. And so I think again, you know, this council, if they do vote for this site plan and there'll, there'll be this discussion, that can, you know, I think that you have members that even are in the audience. So I think that just sending something like that puts, puts a pressure on them that I think is, is in, it could be in dereliction of, a dereliction of their responsibility under the statute. So I would just caution about that.
You're a city attorney. Variances are usually requested by the petitioner because they want to do something that is maybe a hardship. But what I meant was that we get to see the thing several times. And it can change and trying to get a quality development. And, and somehow, I feel that it's proper to, to say why we did what we did from my way of seeking variances is get equality. And that's not to put a pressure on them to vote our way. But, but you have to have a feeling of why, why there are variances. It's not the petitioner asking for the variance, the city council asking in a way to get equality development. And I-
I'm sure you would say that.
I mean, it's, it's, you know, if we're talking about sitting down with the various committees and expressing how they feel about things and how we can work better together as a team. But you're in one hand, got to know what the other one's doing. You follow me? And without, without putting, I understand where you're coming from, and I agree with you. I just say there's got to be some way in which, that you can reach out to your team member and say, hey, you know, we want to protect people's property in, in a way that just secure their privacy and what, or whatnot. So how do you do that and still stay within the framework of not, you know, twisting their arms?
Right, right. I mean, you're approving a site plan conditioned upon those waivers. But the measurement of the waivers and whether they meet the legal task is really something that only the zoning board, and they, they shouldn't have kind of undue influence by it. Because then they're not following their, their oath to follow the law.
I, I got you. Still, somehow, somehow, they are part of the team, they respect it. And they are there because council may lay something on somebody and say, saying we can't do this, we have to have it, and it hurts you. And that's really why it goes to the appeal board, because it is a hardship.
Right, there's either a use or a non-use, dimensional type.
It should not be a financial reason to go before.
Right, right.
So anyways, I, if, I, I, you know, I will not book my senior attorney.
Well, I guess, I think you have-
I think that I need your assistance.
You have members on zoning board who have probably, there was this conversation. And they probably fully understand where council is coming from on this, so, okay.
Well, in, in that same vein, if, if the zoning board of appeals members come to site plans and actively engage and, and ask questions, is that, where is that? Because we've had this discussion about council members going to site plans. And that site, council members actually testifying and-
At planning commission?
Yeah.
And that's not appropriate.
It's not appropriate, but we had that conversation. But you also have zoning board of appeals members who come to meetings and actively engage. So I mean, it looks like if the team works with, if there are some parameters, we all should be in a-
Well, and I, and again, these are open meetings. And I think certainly VBA members, planning, anybody is free to attend these meetings. But I think when it comes down to a variance request that's in front of them, they have to follow the law and only the law. And so to say, well, but I've got this pressure from this person, that, that's, that's way outside of what the law anticipates. The law says, here are the standards. And for a variance to be granted, you have to meet all these standards. And if, in fact, a particular request meets some-
I think it should be clear, like, we had that conversation about council members going to the site plan and actually standing up, testifying and giving their opinion.
But at the planning commission?
No, yeah, at the planning-
Planning commission.
I've never at the site.
But at the site plan, you know, if you have a zoning board of appeals member there and they're asking questions and, and engaging in the conversation, and then it's coming to them.
But, but remember, they've also taken a note that they're going to follow the law. So I, I understand what you're saying, that maybe they will be getting other information and, and discussion beyond what they should be looking at when they come to considering the variance. But, you know, we're going to assume that they're upholding the law because that's the oath they took.
Well, we have, excuse me, Mr. Jones, are you speaking, you know, Mr. Councilor?
Um, the VBA, zoning board of appeals is a quasi judicial body, correct? And they must make their decisions based on the law. And I personally don't think that we should make any kind of recommendations to them. I mean, I think what we've said today, that we think these are, although they were created by the developer, they solve certain problems that we agree, that we think they are a good thing to do. But that's totally up to the VBA. And I, I don't think we should in any way try to influence them. I just think that is getting into great territory. I'm not aware of anyone from the VBA or planning commission participating in the site plan committee meeting. Because I've been to some, even when I wasn't on the committee, just as an observer. And I don't, I recall people, I could miss something, but I don't recall them participating. Anyway, no, I think, I think we have to have a very fine line drawn between these two. And I, I think they'll make the right decision. And if it's, if it's something that shouldn't be done, then that's their responsibility to develop.
Okay, council, let's see if we can wrap this up. We'll go over to the last and then council and Fraser, and then we'll entertain a motion.
Chair, of the site plan committee for the last eight years, I have never allowed anyone on any other commission meeting to speak about them. I live in a row of order, happy day. It better happen while I was agenda.
Thank you. Uh, Councilman Fraser.
Yeah, I think that, first of all, maybe the zoning board of appeals has a more crisp understanding of the law than, than we do because they deal with it on a, on a meeting by meeting basis. But we're not devoid of that information either. We, we understand the law. I think the strongest message that we could send to the zoning board of appeals is unanimous vote out of this, out of this council. So that they know that we understand the variances that we're, that we're going to be asking for. But if we do it with a unanimous decision out of this council, it should not confuse them at all whether there was any, anybody that wasn't in favor of what was sent. And that would be the message that is not a message.
Uh, Councilor-
I'm the real pen.
Order.
We have a motion by council and all, ordered by council, with Fraser to approve the enactment. Uh, just to prove, prove a little thing. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
And you oppose? What is your?
Now, I'll move for the enactment of ordinance sixteen seventeen. So, order.
We have a motion by council and all, ordered by council and Fraser to approve the enactment of ordinance sixteen seventeen, which is the Arthur Jonas redevelopment to his own two and, and this new plan, the actual family residential located at the former St. Pete's property. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
And you oppose? What is your?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is it possible for me to tell the VBA you were in favor or not?
Okay, and thank you, thank you.
Mr. Chair. I, I just want to make sure that, based on the recommendation of the site plan committee, that this will come back on the sixteenth. Okay, thank you.
But keep to your patient. All right, we move to the item number three, our agenda, the House of Representatives.
Welcome.
Yes, we have Mr. Mike Sape O'Hare, who distributed from the recycling authority. He would love to tell us- He would love to tell us about our increased service levels and...
I would. Thank you, thank you for having me. What I, what I always like to do is tell you how much I enjoyed the lighting ceremony. Because I'm, I'm kind of a sucker for high school banks. My daughter plays in high school drum line. And when I pulled up, I thought, this is a hazardous waste agreement. I appreciate it. You will recall that the city has worked with Rosack for nearly two decades, providing service to the residents, well, when they need to get rid of their household hazardous waste, the oils, the paint, the thinners, the cleaners, the batteries, the pesticides, etc., that we have in our kitchen, under our kitchen sink, in our basement. So we need to get rid of it, don't bump our trash. DPW doesn't want us pouring it down our drains. We memorialized that relationship a couple of years ago so that we could better comport with the city's requirements, the purchasing requirements, and internal controls that we need to have when it's approving contracts and approving invoicing. What we have before you is a continuation of that agreement for the next three years. If you look closely at the agreement, you'll see that there's some pricing in the agreement for this year because we were able last year to leverage our increasing popularity and the size of our event with our service provider, our contractor, the community contract, to lower our costs. And so we passed those cost savings along to the city for this year, even though the contract that's in place goes to the end of the year. We thought, well, this plan, pass this along regardless of whether or not we make any technical changes to the contract for this current calendar year because it's the right thing to do. And, you know, we were saving money, we want to save the city some money. The contract that you have before you continues this relationship in these agreements through the year 2016, calendar year 2016, with lowered costs for this current year, lowered costs for the next year, and a smudging increases in the current fifth year and twenty sixteen. In fact, in twenty sixteen, three years from now, your pricing will be about the same as what it would have been this current calendar year under the current contract. So we're really seeing a flatlining, a lowering, and then a flatlining of the costs and being able to continue providing services that the residents, you know, certainly want. We had well over eight hundred residents attend events this year throughout our area, not just at our Southfield events, the ones spring and the ones fall. But residents who can't make those events have opportunity to bring it to some of our other events, whether it's in Farmington Hills or Novi or Wicksum, or take it directly to our vendor in Livonia. So we try to cater to the residents and their needs, and we do do a good job of that. And this just continues our relationship. So if you have to answer any questions that you have.
Okay. Council, any question? Or, or complimentary for that?
Yeah, Mr. Shad, just to clarify, in my mind, the visit, they make the current year through the year's by two seventeen, because seventeen is now the base amount. Is that, is that what I'm trying to say?
Yes. Not a large amount of money, but it's in the right direction.
No, but what I'm trying to say is that rate, whatever it is now, is minus the two point seven, two point one seven.
No, we're starting from one.
Okay. You know, because it's starting, you're, you're starting at a base number, some kind of number. Whatever it is, whatever it is now, your rate, it's going to be cut, it's going to be cut by, lowered by two point one seven.
Yes.
And, and for participation, twenty point two nine, direct, direct trip. Now, they'll hold this rate from twenty fourteen, two thousand fourteen, and then the rate will increase one point eight five. That, they will be from that base or, or with the base minus two point one seven?
Yeah, I, I think, I can be really clear about that.
I can't.
Your contract, your contract for this year...
I can't play with these numbers.
Right. Your contract for this year called for each, each person who attended the event to be, to the, the cost of twenty seven dollars and sixty cents.
Okay.
That went down this year to twenty seven dollars, and will be held constant for next year. And it will go up in twenty fifteen to twenty seven fifty. So it'll still be below what you were contracted for this year.
Okay.
And it'll be twenty seven eighty five in twenty sixteen. Now, also, for homeowners that can't make one of our events but take it directly to our vendor in Livonia, the rate would have been twenty seven dollars and sixty cents, just like they had come to an event, like everybody else. But instead, we negotiated that rate to go down to twenty two dollars. And that will be twenty two dollars. It was twenty two dollars this year, so we already gave you the lower rate. It'll be twenty two dollars next year. The following year will go up fifty cents, and the following year after that will go up another fifty cents. But at the end of twenty sixteen, or during the calendar year twenty sixteen, your rates, your blended average costs will be essentially equal to what you paid in, would have paid in twenty thirteen. It's actually four tenths of, of a, of a percent higher.
So what we need to do is schedule. This, this does require a lot of...
It is in your contract. It is, it is in an agreement that you have before you to approve. It's section, section five point seven.
We're going to bring this back on the sixteen.
Okay.
So this is information right now. I've already made a note. We need to clarify this detail.
It's, it's, it's...
And we'll, we'll get the schedule.
You have, you have the agreements on page three, five point seven. Section five point seven has the schedule of costs in it.
Counsel doesn't have all that detail right now.
Okay.
Council, this will be on our district's, please, if you can, if that is helpful.
Yes, thank you, Mike.
Okay, we'll work with Saefo to make this a little easier to understand.
Councilman Craig?
Yes, another question that has nothing to do with rates, but it has to do with hometown. We have, in our, we have some old laundry soap, liquid laundry soap.
Mm-hmm.
And I've hesitated to put it in garbage, in Detroit. But I don't know, is that hazardous waste or is that...
It's, it's technically not hazardous waste, but we advise homeowners, if they're coming to one of our events anyway, to bring whatever liquids of that nature they have with them. We can take them. We would rather us take them and deal with them as opposed to putting them in a trash can and then into the garbage truck where they might end up being spilled. Now, it is, that's not a technically hazardous material, laundry soap, you know what it is, but there are other types of liquids certainly that are, and other cleaners that are. But we, we tell residents all the time, you know, another good example is used cooking oil. People call us all the time, say, we have this used cooking oil. Can I bring powdered soy sauce? I say, well, certainly, we'll, we'll take advantage. It's not hazardous, cooked in it after all. But we'd rather take that. But we tell residents, if, if that's all you have, don't bring this. So seal up real well. There are other ways to get rid of it. We can always take it. But we don't, we don't want them to go to the trouble of bringing us some that's not hazardous. But if they have something, an item like that they want to get rid of, that they, is, particularly when it's a liquid, we tell them, if you're coming with your batteries and your, your old gas and your motor oil and your old thinners and cleaners and stains and pesticides, feel free to bring this other stuff too.
Okay. I know that, you know, when you do the laundry, soap, soap will down the drain.
Right.
But I can imagine the surprise if I didn't help it happen down the drain, and throw, down in Detroit at the water. Okay, thanks.
All right, Councilman Shad.
Um, Mike, so you're, every time, like, I came last October and I had a box of batteries. So you talked with recycling day on October seventeenth, I think it was, whatever it was.
Yeah, yeah.
And, so that, just that little box of batteries that I didn't want to put in the trash, um, the cost for that was twenty seven dollars.
That one was twenty seven dollars. But then, when you, when you do the math, when you average all out, because, well, you only brought a little bit of stuff. Somebody else may have bought a whole trailer load.
Right.
Right. And so, so the price, the unit price was the same for you as it was for someone who brought the trailer load. And the reason for that is, one, on average, when you figure in the cost of all the material we get, it ends up being costing about twenty seven dollars to get rid of that. But the other, other reason is, that way, we can allow residents to go to any of these events. Because if we had to charge on a per pound or per gallon basis, it makes it, it makes it virtually impossible due to logistics of allowing a Southfield resident to go to a Novi event or a Wicksum event or Farmington Hills event, because we can't track and consequently bill according to those volumes. But if we do it on a, a, a per participant basis, we can keep track very easily. We log this stuff in, we get their address, we write them down, we say, okay, this Southfield resident, this Farmington Hills resident, this Novi resident, this is what they, they came to this event, then we, Rosack gets billed. To say we had an event in, in Southfield, the, the, when you, we had about five hundred cars go through that event. In fact, I got it right here. We had five hundred and seventeen cars go through that event. And so a portion of them, two hundred and forty-five of them, two, two hundred and forty-five of them were from Southfield, but the rest were from somewhere else. And so we got billed, Rosack did, from our vendor, for those five hundred and seventeen cars. And we apportioned out with no markup from us to each of our communities for their residents that came to that event. And so by tracking it that way, we can then easily allow residents to cross boundaries and participate. By allowing them to cross boundaries, the events are bigger, and that drives those rates down. That's why we're able to provide the lower rates. And, and these rates are as low as you'll find in southeast Michigan.
Well, I'm not questioning the event. I just didn't, so my companion question to that is, every year that I've gone, it's extremely well worth it. And things just blow, and they tell you, don't get out of your car, and, you know, all of that. And you have lots of people there to help. But I noticed that you've had signs on Eight Mile Road telling people where to, where to enter. And I don't remember, and maybe I just didn't think about it, but how did you know that I was a Southfield resident and went through that?
You, you logged in, you may recall, there were Department of Public Works, right there on Maple Ridge, the DPW staffs there. And they asked people to identify who they are, where they're coming from.
Did they ask for ID?
They, they generally asked for ID.
They're doing that, but...
At, at the Southfield events, it's, it's the Southfield Department of Public Works checking the IDs. And the Novi events, the Novi DPW, Wicksum. And Wicksum is actually my staff because they have small, small people.
So if I, because we border Detroit, if I was a Detroit resident and saw that sign, and I, maybe I'd return away.
They wouldn't be allowing it. No, no, they, they, we turned this off. Now, having said that, we always will find someone that manages to sneak their way in, but they end up not on the log with a, with a valid address. So they don't, they don't, so if, if the vendor, if the vendor were to bill us for five hundred and twenty participants, and I've got five hundred and seventeen addresses, then we'd just end up eating the three, the three residents that snuck in somehow.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. That is for council? Now, President? Sure.
If, if Mike could just address the recent county solid waste meeting, where you're on the board, outcome, do we have an amendment coming to the solid waste plan? The other thing, like, the Detroit contract, its impact on Rosack? And then if you could just briefly describe it from the central program, about what the NAF...
Good idea. I'll, I'll start last, let's start the, the, the last one first. Rosack received a grant from Michigan Department of Remote Quality, the Volition Prevention Program, to pilot, and this will be the first time it's done in the state, at a, a senior residential facilities, the collection of used and unwanted, unused and unwanted pharmaceuticals. We have these events that we're talking about, these household hazardous waste events. And at these events, we take, we take pharmaceuticals, prescription medications or other medications because we, you know, we don't want them to remain in the home so that they can be illicitly used, improperly taken, or flushed on the drain. But what we, the message we got from our, many in our senior population is, those are all good and well, but we're not mobile. I can't come Saturday. I can't come to that event. I can't, I can't drive Livonia. I can't get there. So we sought a grant to test having these types of collections put on a very small, limited basis at the senior living facilities. And so Southfield's going to be one of our sites, the Southfield Senior Center, where we can test the collection of those materials and see how well that works. And we got a, you know, grant to pay for the majority of the material. We're really excited about that, actually, because we think this is really important. You know, the used pharmaceuticals in particular, they can cause so many problems, but we're starting with taking them because they think it's a good idea to use them illicitly. Or, you know, if, if you're like me, when a prescription changes, and I don't necessarily, I'm not, all that diligence, but I got, give you rid of the old one. And sometimes that leads to people taking the wrong medication sometimes, and you have trouble with their dosages. And we want to, we want to educate people about making sure you're managing your unwanted, unused pharmaceuticals well, and giving them an avenue to get rid of them. So that's, that's the pharmaceutical collection that we'll be piloting. We're looking to do a collection in February at the Southfield Senior Center as well as a couple of other communities to see how well this works. The Oakland County Solid Waste Committee, Oakland County received a, a request from Rizzo Services to establish a transfer station and, it's a transfer facility and solid waste processing plant in Pontiac. It has, it's at the old Fiero plant in Baltimore, I think it is. They have the support of the city of Pontiac, and they have actually a host community group with the previous emergency financial manager. But the processes, they have to make an application to the county. It has to go through the Oakland County Solid Waste Planning Committee. And then it would go from there to, there's a ninety day comment period. That comment period is opened up. It'll come back to this, to the committee. And then it'll go, if approved, go to the county board commissioners. If the county board of commissioners approves it, then it goes out to each individual municipality. Two thirds of the county's municipalities have to approve that plan amendment before it can go on to the state for, for the Michigan Department of Remote Quality approval. We're very early in the process. The last week, week, week before last, the ninety day public comment period was initiated through the Solid Waste Planning Committee. Once that ends, the, then the committee will take its due diligence and then the board of commissioners. So at some point, probably in the spring, this will be, that amendment will be before this body, assuming that it gets the records approvals all along the way. The transfer station, transfer facility is designed to take waste from the Rizzo Services contracts they have in northern Oakland County, put that material on larger trucks so that they don't have to direct all that material from the neighborhoods to the landfill. And they can more easily avail themselves of using a landfill of their choice as opposed to the nearest landfill. They would also be doing some processing at that site, where they will be taking that, that waste and pulling out some of the valuable recycled materials, cardboard and metals. And also on that site, which doesn't require county approval, committee approval, or city approval, other than the city Pontiac, is they, they do want to have their own recycling plant. I had that location right off any one of the old Pontiac buildings, just like they, they have a facility, similar to the one that we have here in, in Southfield. That's sort of a back burner project that they intend to do at some point, I believe, to accommodate their, their municipal routes in northern private city. But you should probably expect to see something on that. I'm going to guess late screening, really sorry. And then finally, there were some, you may have read contracts, contract finalists, I should say, through the, the city Detroit's request proposal process, two, two vendors were awarded two quadrants each at the city. Advanced disposal with services, Pontiac by the way, and then Rizzo Services. Each were awarded the right to negotiate a contract to serve two quadrants in the city to replace the current public sector provision of those services, and to do it through their private sector companies under contract with the city. The details of the contract are still in negotiation. We don't know exactly what it will look like. But we think in terms of recycling, it looks like there's the intent at a minimum to keep the pilot collections that are going on in the city right now. There are a handful of neighborhoods that are receiving recycling in the city, about, it's about ten percent of the city, as curbside, weekly curbside recycling collection, just like here in Southfield. That material currently comes to our facility here in Southfield. Then, the, whether or not it expands to the rest of the quadrant, I think it's going to depend upon the negotiation between Detroit and the contractor, the character of the contract, the character of the quadrant, rather, and the demand for those services. They're talking anything from expanding a quadrant ride on a weekly basis to perhaps a bi-weekly or perhaps monthly. But that's something that, you know, very few people really know the outcome of that. And it's, there's something to be known about that. But it does suggest that, at least the press reports suggest that the city of Detroit will save about six million dollars a year annually by privatizing those services. And it looks like they will also, at the same time, be able to expand recycling within the city to, to match what's going on in some of the more progressive communities like Southfield, for example.
Okay, very cool. Any other questions, John?
Just briefly, any, how often do we have these...
Just briefly, any, how often do we have the events in the city for...
The events are held in the city specifically, twice a year. We have, we have...
Any discussion on anything that...
No, the twice a year collection is actually really a good number. You have one in April, you have one in October, and then in between those or before those events, we have the other three events. Two of them in the spring, Straddling, the Southfield event, one in Wicksom and one in Farmington, those two where Southfield residents can go. And then we have one, the same one, as the Southfield Fall Event, the City of Novi, to which Southfield residents can go. And the reason, and the reason for having, having it set up that way is it gives more opportunity for Southfield residents without having to have more events, you know, but the two events is really more than most of the cities we typically have, so the city of Southfield really has local access to more events than some of our other communities. The problem with having too many events is your event size diminishes, and you begin to lose your economies of scale. You don't really want to have events that are too large. Our events range anywhere from five hundred cars to two thousand cars, but anywhere in that range is a good number. If you get below five hundred, you start to lose those economies of scale, because you have certain fixed costs, trucking costs, and putting across those types of things. And if you had more events, you'd fall below that threshold.
And getting back to the point that Councilman favor brought up, if, well, now that Rizzo has a part of the contract, and they participate in the hazardous waste as a contractor, so now with them taking over Detroit, where we have those events, would all of those individuals under that contract be invited?
No, because the, the Rizzo contract is just for curbside collection of solid waste and recycling, it's not for household hazardous waste collection. That would be a separate service. And Detroit, those rents are generally served by the Wayne County programs that Wayne County puts on. And, and, by the way, Wayne County uses the same contractor we do, at rates that are comparable to what we get, but we get...
Thank you. I just had one comment. Can we make sure that the event in February, the senior, and, and get rid of the unwanted and unused medicine?
Yes, I have it out, up in the media.
Right, from media, correct. Thank you very much.
And we'll be coordinating those events, by the way, directly with those senior facilities, so we're going to reach out directly to the tenants, so that they, with informational flyers and that type of thing, because we, that's our target audience, is that, is that senior citizen that lives, lives in a senior living facility that, you know, may not otherwise have access to these outside events, so we want to reach right into their, their community and let them know that we've got a plan to help them.
Interesting, I was watching Dr. Oscar being, they were talking about when do you dispose of your medicines, when do you poop it, when do you toss it, and it's really interesting, we're talking about things, getting rid of unwanted and unused.
Well, and, and the scary thing too, if I may, there's, there's also a phenomenon out there known as the Skittles Party, for those of us that are, might remember of the trash can party in our, you know, college years, where everybody brings a bottle of something, and it goes into a container, and then it creates this sort of rather eye tasting punch, if you will. Some of our youth are now doing that with pharmaceuticals, and that's certainly a much more dangerous approach. So getting into the medicine cans and putting them in a bowl on a table and reaching and grabbing a handful, something that does happen, and that's one more reason why we want to provide opportunity for, for the adults in the community to get rid of this stuff when they're not using it, so there's not these opportunities.
Okay, thank you. This item will come up on our number sixteen.
I was going to say, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, you move to our...
You have my...
...of course, that's what we need, to make it...
Oh, no!
Joan, come here.
Cat's rise.
Cat's rise.
Council, it has been recommended that Committee of the Whole be scheduled prior to our next regular meeting at some different school, five p.m. Mr. Schrader, I would ask, do we know what the items were?
Well, one of them is obviously cycling, and the finals, whatever finals work has to be done on that, right, Sue, it's grand back.
It, it will be on the rank of the meeting for the sixteenth.
Yeah, but we have, we have, contract we just talked about, we have some staples.
That's the Committee of the Whole, that's the four prior...
Yes.
No, that would be on the rank of the... Well, what I want, I guess what we want to know is what's on the Committee of the Whole?
Okay, we have emergency snow removal, more issues.
Are these the things that you were asking?
Yes.
Okay. So several items.
Oh, we have...
Yes, there's several items, because I... No. I think part of it was because of the short work week last week, and trying to get ready for this agenda today, and some of it was like, well, we'll just do one ahead of the sixteenth, to make sure...
Generators overload.
Right, exactly.
Level list, and we got to get down to it. Next item, a very...
We need to get a little...
Right, yeah, a little bit of...
The board.
We have a motion by Councilman, or by Councilman, will move in, all in favor?
Aye.
And Chair, we, I knew that we had a meeting for Committee of the Whole starting at five o'clock on the sixteenth of August.
We have a motion by Councilman, to have a case by conference, to move the scheduled meeting for the sixteenth, two thousand, five o'clock, eight thirty, all in favor?
Aye.
And they oppose, Councilman.
Okay, we have an appointment, I'd like to very strongly recommend for, Lori Siskin is here, the Resources Director. Miss Siskin has thirty-four years of experience in the field, and I want to say with regard to her performance with the city, that she's done everything that's been asked of her, and certainly more, and she's earned this recommendation. We're going to be moving to the next level, one beyond, and where we're headed as a city, as Council's well aware, we've had a decline in our tax base that's been going on for, since two thousand nine, ten, and we've done, we've received recent information from our assessor, that finally we will, we will be bottoming out, and this year, this year we're going into, will be a zero year, and then hopefully we'll be working our way up. So we can say we've survived a major accomplishment, done, I think, a very high principle that we've maintained, not letting anyone off here. We've taken jobs and restructured them, labor contracts, administration, negotiations, spent an arduous five to six year period, and now it's time to move forward. Recently, in legal, we added some strength there, deputy position with the expertise in labor relations, which will, and the, having an HR director will formulate this team in a permanent appointment moving forward. Life is getting more complicated in HR by the day, and I believe that we certainly have a strong knowledge base to work from, and this will help us solidify our team. This is in line with the discussion, plan for the position, that was incorporated with on this preface, Erin retired in June of two thousand and ten. Miss Siskin's has her degree from the University of Maryland with high honors, and thirty, thirty-four years of total experience in the field, five years with the National League of Cities, five years with the Regional Transportation Authority in Chicago, and twenty-four years of the city of Southfield. She has helped reduce this department by thirty-seven percent, and through reorganizing, restructuring work assignments, these increases have been absorbed over time, without significant reductions in essential services over the refining department. This is exactly what we needed to have happen over the years. It's happened in other departments, and I'm proud to say that we as a city have held together strongly, and we have lived through a fifty percent reduction in our tax base, without laying anyone on, and without reducing services to the public. And I commend this body and for the support and the strategic strength that we've shown over the years to get here, and now it's time, it's time to move forward with our new team. We have lots of work to do in planning organizational structure going forward in other departments. We know we have that ahead, we have the Affordable Care Act to deal with, unprecedented amounts of work in the area of HR and labor relations. So I would like to provide this recommendation along grade R, which is in the Human Resources Director, grade R position of one hundred and four thousand, four thirty-three with the standard, the group benefits, and I believe that we're getting a lot of expertise and a lot of indication for the amount of money that's involved in this recommendation.
Madam Chair?
Well, we have a few questions for us. They're totally open.
Yes, I just want to say for the record that Lori Siskin has a number of situations proven her wealth, her talent. I have counted on her, she's not failed me in different situations. I've been able to ask Council, she's been very responsive. I think, very highly of her, I think she's very deserving of, of the appointment. My question goes to the city administrator, because we currently have a Director of HR who is also on the rolls for the pension board as the pension administrator, and it is a formula that appears to be thirty percent as a city administrator, that's the amount that she's compensated for, and then the other funds are for HR Director. My contention has always been is that we need a, we need a full-time HR manager, because what's required of a pension administrator of attending the meetings, answering to the city, to the pension attorney, answering to the board members, keeping minutes, doing the research for, to be prepared for those meetings. And my question is, is that with the need, and you have heard this repeatedly, that we cannot continue to have organizational chart of a city that will never return to those positions? We have to create a structured organization that functions for the city that we're going to be in the future, because we will never expand to the numbers we had before. So we have organizational chart, all these empty spots. And to give you an example, will the duties of the HR manager be the same as they were for the person who left years ago? And when we hire different people, is there a valuation of the position? Because if we just go around filling these positions, and the work has been dispersed differently, there's some things that aren't being done, and we have not taken the time, we, now, I won't say the time, but we have not achieved the goal of restructuring our government. So it's, it's for accounting purposes, when we go through a budget, and we say, what does it take, how many positions, and how much money does it take to run the city? We just pick who's sitting in the seats now and say, well, that's what it takes. But we have not moved from the point that we were twenty years ago of describing the work, the flow chart, and if we're going to do that properly, we need an engaged and employed, fully employed HR manager. Currently, our HR manager is sitting at the table for our labor. That HR manager is doing all of those duties that are defined in there, but thirty percent of her time is going to another function. I want, I want Lori Siskin, my recommendation is for her to be the HR manager, and that the duty of the administrator be given to someone, someone else. And I will tell you, I watched her predecessor oversee, advise, and she came to the council and advised us on what the city, the serves board was doing. The recommendation for multiplies, that came from our HR manager. If we don't change that, you're going to have one person sitting at the table with serves, negotiating, fixing that contract, sitting at the table with labor, negotiating a contract, advising council on that, there's no checks and balances. And I tell you, that has been a concern of mine, and we have a gem sitting here, ready to be appointed as our HR manager, and I totally support that. I really would want her to be there, I feel the city would be stronger, she's earned it, she's qualified, but this dividing of duties and not changing, and even looking at the position, to me, is not the most efficient way of doing things. And I want my, I want that on the record to be shown, that that is, that to me is a challenge that this city needs to step up to. And it's hard, because we're so short-staffed, and we have all these other issues, but it's like, I don't, I don't have time to go to the doctor for this sore on my leg, and the sore just keeps getting bigger, but you know what? I'm saving costs because I didn't go to the doctor. The sore is still there. And sore on the lady is going to deal with you, or are you going to deal with that? And I just have a real problem with that. I want Lori Siskin to be my HR Director. I think she, she's qualified, I'm concerned about what that position is, but I have a real issue with her continuing to assume, and then for us to say, we're going to, when she retires, she's going to get a full-time retirement for a full-time HR Manager, just like Valerie Crump did. She's going to get all the benefits. If she, if she has sick leave or she has to go to disability, that pension board is not going to pay the city for it. The pension board does not pay her sick leave. The pension board will not, that, that city, that board that's paying her to be administrator will not be paying her retirement. It will be us as a city, and every other person who deserves that from working the forty hours a week on that. And so it's clearly separated, and I think it should be separated in her position. Thank you, Madam.
Any questions? Uh, Chair?
Uh, Councilman Ladd.
I have to, what the mayor said, I don't think we all, all of us know, know anything about it. We don't know. Thanks to the information, but, and it's, and it's a shame that the council doesn't know what was happening all these years. What else?
But you should, she was...
We know, we know, we should have listened.
We didn't, no.
Absolutely.
You?
Yeah.
Yes, neither you or them.
No.
Well, I don't believe that.
Well, we did.
You know.
Oh, we did, we did know. No, we did know.
I didn't know one person had the two jobs, Valerie Crump did.
Valerie Crump did not do that.
It's not Valerie, it's Lori, that's...
No, it's, it's just since, oh, the background.
The advantage to having her as our HR Manager, with her knowledge base of doing both, of doing both allows her to be an excellent position of management over that, or to, but to actually sit at the meeting, conduct the meeting, answer to the, because she has to answer the phone when that attorney calls, because she worked for that attorney.
But I think the, the, I don't, I don't want to hang this up on this, I think... I think what we just need to have an understanding of this before. Okay. What happened is there was a charter ordinance, or a charter change.
It was ridiculous.
And there was an independent serves board upon Southfield Employee Retirement System. So there are two boards in this city for retirement. There's the Fire and Police and there's the serves board. Fire and Police are under Act 345. That's an entirely different scenario, they're totally independent and they have their own set of rules and regulations in the state mission. Ours is a charter situation and all I want to, would want to understand is just how we would work this out. I don't promote that it's an insurmountable.
I don't either.
Issue, okay, I don't think it is. Okay, but I think we need to understand when we're all done, how it would work, would be, what would be the authority, for example, on contracts, would they still come back to council and how that would work and just how we would work it out. I do agree that HR is, there's a lot of work to be done. I agree with that sentiment entirely. So, you know, maybe the best thing to do, I would suggest, is I'd like to get this appointment done and we come back to council with how this would work.
And she can do this right along.
Yeah.
I mean.
Right, I understand, but let's make sure.
I just want to work out the details.
I'm a full-time manager.
Well, I would, if I could make the recommendation, I've had some conversations, she knew I felt this way. And one thing she reiterated to me is that she does not lie and that there would need to be a transition period, she couldn't just stop doing it at once. And, you know, to the council president for the council too, would the recommendation would be to give eighty or ninety days to figure it out or whatever you choose between the president and administrator? And, and I must call the Ms. Crump. But if we're moving in that direction, I would think that that would, you know, that would be something that we could get her.
I mean, to move in a, to move in a direction where some less time is spent on this makes sense. I just don't know how, how exactly it would work.
Let's do, a few people want to speak, so it seems like the council wants to move this over to your table and look at it and come back with some sort of recommendation of what to be there without it being, keeping her impartial, making sure that she's still committed to the position of being HR director and if it is feasible to still remain in the position of continuing administrator.
Yeah, I think that, for example, that title, this redone, should be HR director. Okay. Like the relationship between how the serves board would work, you know.
Well, I guess really kind of the central question is going to be, does the council envision the serves board hiring an administrator type that only would report, it'd be their employee, which is how the Police and Fire Board acts? Or would you envision the city hiring somebody, part-time or whatever, and performing that function and still keeping that tie with the serves board?
I don't even think we're ready for that.
Absolutely.
I don't think we need to, you know, we need.
Take care of that.
So you want that explored?
That explored, yeah.
I think we're unified in the direction of there being more, less time spent on that function and, you know, more focus on the HR, because we've got a lot of work to do. I can, I'm sure we can come back with a plan to accommodate that. I just, I just couldn't pull all pieces together. I really didn't want to hang this up.
I don't know.
A councilman's side.
My remarks are kind of preemptive here, but I am totally in support of Lori's appointment to be the services or resources director. She's more than proved herself and she, you know, she's done a great job, especially communicating with council. It's been excellent over the years. I agree with the mayor, I think that these two functions need to be separated. And I also agree with what the mayor said, Lori brings this whole added dimension as HR director, being very familiar with serves. So it seems that that's a plus and could act as a check and balance in this process. I would hope that we have an answer on this within ninety days. And it seems to me that we have, another person has to be hired or duty is assigned to somebody else so that this isn't Siskin's direct responsibility.
A councilman for that.
Well, I was just going to say that, I mean, this is before us this evening, but I think that, yeah, we're looking at completely structuring of all the departments and we have to keep piecemealing this. And I think that putting time into the fact that the administrator is unfair because his job is looking at every department and we're just looking at public works, and it's the largest amount of money to spend beyond even Public Safety and we don't have guys to shovel snow. So I just think there was laying a lot on Jim at this point and he knows we have to restructure, but, you know, it's a balanced head, I think he's just been great at, and that was getting his head of the hole and having people do these other jobs during this period of time when he said, you know, we went down from three point seven billion dollars to two point three billion. I mean, there's no city that I'm aware of that this size could have stayed alive without a manager coming in here, use that kind of, billion dollars loss is two thousand nine, two thousand ten. And so, yes, we assure two hundred and forty people and those are mostly department heads. I mean, we haven't got a public works director. And so, so I think that, you know, we have to kind of set a, a schedule to get this whole operation under wraps and find out what, how much money we have in revenue and where do we put it to give us the best shot without giving him, I think he just has to come back with him, to us from him after he's looked at the whole operation and making his directions or his recommendations. And I do believe what Mr. Sabre said and you, Mayor, is much needed. I just think that we've got to look at the whole operation.
Councilwoman Seymour.
Yes, I made a move for Rule Ten.
We need a support.
Support.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Seymour supported by Councilman Fertati for Rule Ten.
Yeah, question, because obviously the Rule Ten means we're going to vote on something. I don't even think we've come to a, we're just going to make a recommendation that Lori has the title, but the details are going to be worked out later.
I think the details are clear in terms of human resources director, that's what we're going to do.
We need to come back with a way of handling the serves pensions in a way that directs the energy to the human resources function and away from the level of involvement.
Okay, I just want a clarification.
Let me say this, I think as a human resources director, she can be really important to the administrator in giving these jobs up because she has both. I mean, she'd be in a perfect position to divide this thing out, which would be helpful to Jim and.
Oh, yeah. I'm absolutely comfortable with that. I just wanted to clarify.
She's doing everything now and we're giving her the director's job and I hope that, you know, she'll change every entire department, I mean, and make recommendations in this body and what is the best course of action.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor by Councilwoman Seymour supported by Councilman Fertati for Rule Ten. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor, I move the appointment of Laurie Siskin into her administrative director.
Support.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Seymour supported by Councilman Fertati for Rule Ten.
Siskin has a couple of questions.
Well, let's call for the vote first. Okay, we have some more questions. Councilman's side.
Shouldn't the motion include the provision that salary is retroactive to July first two thousand and twelve?
Well, are you adapting the proposed rule?
Adapting what's in front of us. Anything that on the menu?
I have a, I thought we increased the salary during this period.
Oh, don't say it, the motion is effective as July, so I want to.
But I thought we, I thought she came to council to raise salaries of the acting secretaries so that they, there was an increase to acting, but you're saying it wasn't at the level that she was.
Right, it was not.
It was increased but not at the level. So would it be?
We've never paid her this kind of, this rate.
So would the retroactive be in addition to what she was paid in addition? Oh, it would be the difference, wouldn't it?
They're not saying, they're not saying fifteen percent or twenty percent or, what they're saying is real dollars. So whatever real dollars she's making now, the real dollars she will be making.
Do what she'd be making.
Real percentage already doesn't matter. But that is a question that we're going to ask.
Councilman, are you?
I can give answers, but I guess.
No, it would be the difference on retro to June.
Right, you would take what she's making as of July one twelve and the difference between this plus and that would be the retro.
Okay, Councilman Frazier.
Yes, where does this put her on the scale of the job?
Seventy-fifth.
Seventy-fifth, the new, the new number?
Yes.
Or seventy?
Yes.
We have a motion on the table by Councilwoman Seymour supported by Councilman Fertati to approve the appointment of Laurie Siskin to the Human Resources Director position.
I think that's helpful.
Based on everything we have. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now Lori has her claim.
Thank you.
I don't know, did you bring any brownies?
I brought cookies. I did bring cookies, but it depends on the vote.
There goes the Tony Ford bill.
Thank you, council, thank you everyone, Mayor, Mayor Turk and everyone here. I just want to thank you, I appreciate the support, I've listened to everything you've said and, you know, I always say, I love my job. I love the city of Southfield. I love my job, some days I love it more than others. And this is one of those days. I appreciate the support, I appreciate the encouragement you've given me and the recognition that you've given me for the hard work that I do and I'm not going to work any less hard tomorrow or any more hard tomorrow because I always work very hard for the city and I think we'll continue to do that. And my family is here, my husband's here, Mark Siskin, my daughter Jody, who's visiting from New York and I'm just happy that they were able to be here and that you were able to do that tonight while Jody was here.
Thank you for sharing your mom and your wife with us.
Where you hiding in the corner for? Come on here so we can see you.
We got more than you.
There she is, she looks just like her mom. Thanks for being here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
All right. And I'm sorry, I meant to just say, I wouldn't be here if it wasn't for the hard work that Jim does. We all wouldn't be here without the hard work that Jim does every day, every night, every weekend. And we are a great team with Sue and I do appreciate that and Nita's joining the team now too. So that is, there are so many places where people have lost their jobs, have lost their pay and we've made it through and it's all because of him.
Thank you.
Let's give Jim a round of applause.
I saw you twice there. I'm coming back though.
That's a pressure, mate, for your work.
All right. Very true. Thank you, Lori. Let's move to the community, wait, before we do that, are there any other items that the council comes forward with the, Councilman's side?
Yeah, I brought this up last week and I just want to pass this around to everyone. I am really concerned about the water, the public works department and I think this is an opportune time to talk about it because we've lighted up previous conversations. There were thirty positions, I'm not, I don't feel that they all should be filled and we've been on this diet, but I think you get to a point on a diet where it becomes hazardous to the individual, in this case the city. There are so many vacant positions and we've got all this work going on next year in highways and water and sewer. I think that we, and especially given that the water and sewer budget has a thirty-eight million dollar surplus, that some money should be spent on replacing some people. I think we had, we had to do the things we had to do to keep a balanced budget, but this is, and I just wanted on the record that I am really concerned as we begin millions of dollars of road and sewer work next year, are we going to have the people to supervise these projects? And, you know, I look at, you know, Greenfield as an example, why is the Oak Park side of Greenfield between eight and nine fine and the Southfield side has to be redone? And, you know, Don has mentioned many times the roadwork that we found less than satisfactory. I mean, I drove up to Piak last week and I see all this landscaping still going on above fourteen miles. All these new trees are being planted up there and yet we've got this wasteland at You know, I just think we need, this, we just shouldn't ignore this any longer. Sixteen people down in streets and highway, fifteen down in water and sewer. It's a concern to me.
Let me just say this, the Councilman's side, this is actually putting a package out as a result of our Council President's meeting last week, which was an area that Mr. Shuret brought to, Mr. Fertati and I, and he's actually working on it right now. So I think we can, we'll be getting up more.
We're in agreement that with the construction going on, some of the overtime. The question is, do we have a lot of work and this is going to be on the HR, on the HR diet real quick, along with some other program demands that we have? So this is fine and I think that points well taken. The monies that are set aside in the water fund, main emphasis, of course, is on projects, but nonetheless, you have to have enough resources to.
I think that we have, you know, I hear from staff that there's too much overtime and I also know as a manager that when we depend on overtime, then people can, I'm not saying they are here, but they can make a forty-hour week into a. make, um, a forty hour week into a fifty hour week and still do what they would have done in a forty, and they're being paid, um, for, for fifty hours or whatever. And, and the other point I would make is, um, I believe we need to start hiring these people now, so that when construction starts, they have a sense of, um, of, of where the city's going and what, what their job responsibilities are, so that, uh, we're not hiring as, as pavement thing laying out here.
This is, uh, this is not the whole picture. We've got engineering issues, we've got to bring it into, into total focus, but, but there's no question, there's, there's attention asked, it's the hugest piece of the budget, and, uh, it, it is a tight situation, and, and we need, we're going to need to help the strategy on where we're going.
All right, Councilman Facki.
Work to be, work to be done, we're in agreement.
Yeah, um, my comment, one of the, the two comments I have here, go along with you, what Ken has said. Uh, early on it says, you know, this is going to fall on, on Jim's, uh, plate to, to do this. I think it's bigger than, I mean, Jim's already got way too much to do. I think this is an opportune time to re-engineer the jobs, so that we can put our organization together to be a well-functioning organization to go forward, but I don't think Jim, I don't think Jim and Laurie can do it together by themselves. I think it's going to take more than that, I don't know whether they have to hire a, an expert on engineering, job engineering, to help work through what we do, what we want to do, um, to repackage the jobs, but, uh, I think we're going to miss an opportune time to repackage the jobs and then hire into that new, the new look, rather than hire the people and then try to make them fit the new, the new look after we, we do it. So, uh, it's going to, you know, can't be done overnight, but we didn't get here overnight either, so, uh, but it, it can't wait forever either, it needs to be done quickly, but-
I, I think what Council did is great help, uh, in legal, okay?
Yes.
Because we have great, more expertise, uh, and, uh, you know, did the appointment, uh, tonight, because, uh, I'll tell you, I got some ideas rolling right now, they're improving real fast.
Yeah, I just want to say, I think you did the right thing for the right reasons when you did it.
I agree.
The, the times are changing, the assessor says, we hit bottom, and now we're going to start moving up. I think we need to be prepared for that. It's not going to come back, you know, like a, you know, cloud out of the sky, but, uh, we need to make sure we're ready for it, and hire into the, the, the new design.
My, my main concern among many is, we, we're, we're going to hit a zero, and we know, we know we're going to lose our financial position, but we don't have any guarantees yet.
Oh yeah, absolutely. That's why we need to be careful how we do it.
But, uh, we, we, we have to, we have to keep our service levels up.
Absolutely. The, uh, the other thing that I want to bring up is, I got a call today from a lady that lives in our neighborhood, and I told her I couldn't give her any guarantees, and I'm going to lay it on the table and see if there's someone that can figure out a way to get this done, if it can be done. She bought a house in our neighborhood, in my neighborhood. Um, she went through the title company, she did it the right way, what she, what wasn't in the records at the title company was the fact that the house had sat empty for some time, and apparently the bank or the mortgage company owning the home didn't mow the lawn until we mowed it. We mowed the lawn and put the, you know, cost of the, of mowing the lawn on the, on the tax record or against, or against the, the, the home. But it wasn't, it wasn't in the paperwork, what she signed the paper, what she closed. Apparently it's there now, it's over a thousand dollars, and her mortgage company has said that they want to raise her monthly fee, her, her monthly payment, under two hundred dollars to, because there's not enough money in, in her escrow covered it. And I said, you know, that's really kind of nuts, because I think they're looking at it as if the taxes are going to be at this level forever, instead of being a one-time, one-time thing. Um, she's, uh, the house is in her mother's name, uh, because she doesn't have credit, because the house she owned previously, this, she lost in foreclosure because she had a stroke and couldn't work, so she's recovering from a stroke, so she, her, the house is in her mother's name, and it's a thousand dollar, and I don't think we ought to excuse it. I don't know if someone can talk to the bank and say, hey, look, this is not a, you know, our, our taxes aren't that high, and I don't know what legally we can do, or if we can't.
Could, could you clarify this? So those, those amounts, if, if someone didn't pay them, the previous owner, generally at the end of the year, they're rolled onto the taxes a single lot?
Yes.
Do you know that that happened in the inner tax bill?
Yes.
Because sometimes we see these, and they haven't rolled the taxes yet, but the title companies call, and they said, do you have any outstanding assessments? And then those are paid at closing, those are pretty clean.
Yes.
So what happened here is it did roll the taxes?
Uh, it happened last summer.
Okay.
During two thousand and twelve. She moved into the, her home, October of two thousand and twelve, and now they're, and now her mortgage company is saying-
Based on like the July of this summer taxes, that's now more?
Apparently, yeah.
Sure, I, I think we could at least, we could talk to the type, to the mortgage company and title companies to say, right, those are not, that is not her base taxes, that is trying to take into account those-
It's a one month, it's a one week. If, if anything, you know, her mortgage ought to go up to like two dollars or something to pay the-
Right. Well, they're going to try to, because they've got to pay it a lump sum now, I mean, that, that tax bill is due, so it's a big amount that they had to pay, and the escrow is short now.
Yeah.
So, but I do think the conversation would be-
The, the banks are used to hearing us, okay, saying, what we do is to protect the value of your asset, okay? We, that's the whole, it's neighborhood stabilization and appearance of the city, that it also protects that asset, okay? To give a home a looked at, a lived-in look while it's in transition.
Absolutely, and I know why we do what we do.
And so, I think to be receptive to-
Yeah, if you could, just give me the information. I'll- The title company should have researched that. Well, I suppose what happened though, they, they based the taxes and, and everything based on the two thousand and twelve, and then here comes two thousand and thirteen, and this, this thousand dollars, that's a lead, but it gets rolled to taxes, it becomes part of your tax. You'd think they would see though, the structure of the taxes shows that it's, uh, yeah.
Well, the bank doesn't want to see that, you know that.
And they should know our, the Michigan rules for how much taxes did, well, except it was uncapped.
It was uncapped, right?
Yeah.
Right, so, but we, we could certainly do that, we could certainly at least make the account, that those were not, those are not the taxes.
Right. The taxes were, what they, what they-
Well, it, right, probably before, but it, but then it became uncapped, so there's going to be a little bit of inconsistency there. Well, we can at least make an attempt to try to explain that.
Yeah, and, uh-
We've hold this message over several years in the neighborhood.
Okay, I'll get that, I'll get that.
Yeah, if you do that, I'll, I'll form make the account, so, me alone.
Yeah, uh, Council, I wanted to bring, um, an issue to the table. Uh, many of you have heard of the Elliott Larson, uh, the anti-discrimination policy. Um, it is a law that, um, we, we have, excuse me, do we have our own anti-discrimination policy here for the city of Southfield? And, um, do you have, do you, do you have it, will you can read it now?
Are you talking about employment? We have a provision in the charter, just that, you know, there won't be, but, are you talking about employment?
For housing, for housing for the city of Southfield.
Well, that's, that's Elliott Larson, right?
Elliott, Elliott.
Yes.
And I feel that it's time for us to have a discussion about including, uh, and remending our language to include, um, gay, lesbian, and transgender into our policy of saying that, because the law, those of us, I know, uh, Council President and I both were, are EO investigators, and the law, I remember getting a tape, and it was about harassment of a gay person, and that person could not claim sex because it wasn't male or it wasn't female, it's because that person was gay. And, um, we are a city that has been extremely focused on our diversity and our equality in our city, and I think it's time for us to have that conversation, and Mayor President, uh, would ask that it, the issue be referred to our legislative committee and have them come back and advise us on what's happening, and thirty other cities in Michigan have expanded in, and I think it's before our state legislative body right now, to, uh, to consider changing the state law as well.
I would more speak of consensus on that, because I believe Southfield is a very diverse community, and we've upheld the Elliott Larson and those civil rights act, and we're going to be fair in our dealings, but I would go with the consensus of Councilwoman Facki.
All right, we can, uh- That goes to the committee? Come on, for the discussion.
Yeah. Yep.
Okay, let's move down, Mr. Ewing, let's move to the committee first, with that receiving the voters.
Okay.
All right. And then I have one other thing. Every year we have two tree lights, and every year everyone asks the question, why do we have two tree lights? And no one's answered that question. So we have one at the burb, and we have one here, and then we talk about the turnout, because it should be a big festive community event, and it's, it's divided, and I, I think that we could have one tree light, have it be community-based, and I, I will not say it should be here at City Hall or at the burbs.
The tree to the community.
Yeah, so where's it going to be? It's going to be one next year?
Uh, yeah.
One burb next year, year after?
Right.
Oh, it'll push.
Because, because we're going to be turning up-
Business community.
We can't do it.
Get involved, and that's how we make it bigger.
Okay, sorry, thank you, you all are so wise.
All right, we'll move to the communication portion of our agenda, and the first person is Pamela Gerald. She's next. Uh, the next person is Mr. Harmon Duncker. Harmon Duncker.
Thank you.
Good to see you this evening.
Don't say that, do the cooking.
And give us your name and address, and you have five minutes for the ring.
I'm Harmon Duncker, I live at one nine one oh one Green Spruce, Southfield, Michigan. I am president of the Traveler Homeless Association. Over the last several, since last January, when Walmart got shut down, we've been active in trying to get somebody into the St. Beat property. Last Monday, when we had our city council meeting, I was very shocked at the acrimony between you council teams. There was so much nail-biting, backstabbing, I couldn't believe it. We were, my community was anxious to have this development in two sites ago. Now, just to point out what went on in the site planning committee, I went to one this afternoon, and it was very civil, uh, Mr. Jonas presented his plan, everybody discussed what was, you think, now, I'm assuming that that happened at the previous site planning committees also, but then to come in front of the city council on the televised meeting and have council people do great, not only his planning, but his concepts, his ideas, and, you know, it was just unbearable. I had, I watched that meeting three different times, and it always was the same, backstabbing. Uh, you had a, a committee, uh, Economic Development Committee formed, they hadn't heard anything about what's going on with that committee, but, you know, they had a hand in this, uh, or it's, all they're concerned about is across the street, and, you know, we got plenty of open spaces, last year in Eleven Mile, for example, uh, across the street from St. Beat on Southfield, that I know there's somebody interested in that property. But this meeting, the site plan meeting, tonight's meeting, is, you know, fresh air compared to last month. Last month wasn't af, you know, even Mayor Lawrence commented on it in her comments, that how could something like that happen? I'm just hoping that you educated, smart people who have lots of experience in these matters, which I don't, I was a tool in dining, what do I know about land management? But you have the experience, you have the, uh, know-how to set this straight, to where there isn't that acrimony between you, that you behave like civilized people and not get there in front, at the televised meeting, where most of the city watches you, and act that way. Thank you.
All right. Next, uh, hold up, hold your comments, Angela, next up, Stephanie English, two eight seven three five, San Carlos, Southfield, Michigan, forty zero seven six.
I have to piggyback off of, uh, Harmon, we actually came together, we watched the last week televised meeting, uh, over the phone together, I watched it three times, uh, this past week. I was disappointed with the behavior, but I'm inspired by today. Um, I do feel that the behavior last week shown on television was contentious, um, it showed partisan behavior, Southfield deserves better than South, uh, Washington DC style politics at this time, and that's what it looked like on TV. I wanted to be fair and be objective in my observations, so to take the time, more than once this week to watch the meeting, you know that I really was trying to be fair in assessing this and bringing it forward. I come to this meeting because this is a town meeting, and it's not televised, so that Harmon and I having concerns about this, and we're not the only ones, the Walmart group, we did discuss this, we passed messages among us, that we don't want to see this kind of behavior. But today I'm inspired because I saw, oh, and let me just preface, what we saw, we saw in us and them, it seems like the council has two factions, it has two groups, and they're very easily defined, if you come to these meetings regularly, you know which, which people are on which team, and it almost appeared that one team was going to tear this twelve mile in Southfield project under, uh, Mr. Jonah apart. There was one council person in particular who is disrespectful not only to the project, the service that this particular person wants to offer, but we see the attack on the developer himself, as well as the developer for the city center project. It's just, again, I'll say it, it's not a label, but that Southfield deserves better than Washington DC style politics, and we'd like to see it better. The caveat to that is today, I attended the site plan committee meeting, and the same fear that I walked in with, I dissipated, because I did see the panel of the site plan committee members really tear this down. Now, Mr. Fracki and I are best of buddies, we make, we would make strange bedfellows, but he did the right thing by just delaying it one more time, so it didn't appear that he was tearing down Ken Seibert or Jeremy Monson's, uh, wish to have, you know, a strong project go forward. Him actually delaying it just one more time actually brought the best product forward. So it's a matter of both sides working together. That's what diversity in business means. Diversity in business is a bottom-line objective, it's not some quality feel-good kumbaya type of thing. We need all your brains, no matter how different you are, who's on which team, it takes a whole lot of great brains to make one big, big, great brain. So everybody needs to throw their best talent in, their best subject matter expertise, and there needs to be just the appearance of respect among this whole group, because today, the best outcome came about, and you don't have to like each other, but I don't want, as a citizen, we don't want as a citizen to have this appearance of this fracture. Today, this meeting was extremely impressive, so all the, the comments that I was going to have for this meeting, meaning, stop with this bickering, stop acting like you're working in Washington DC, we deserve better, I could temper that with what do we observe this week and what we don't want to see, and then to give the compliment that it did come together. That's what is most important. That's what is most important, is the end result. But at the same time, I don't want there to have this appearance of, now there's a new leadership team on council and that means this other team that, you know, was predominant last year not be participating. We want to see that participation. So I'm hoping that that will come about. Again, this evening, you just see the collaboration among you guys and it is very impressive. What I saw this afternoon, my first time attending a site meeting, was impressive. It's the way it's supposed to be and I'm hoping that it can continue. Thank you.
Okay, councilman Lynn.
Simple answer, Snutman. We changed the plan to a better plan. And that was a whole problem. Today's plan was beautiful and correct and right and everything, the others were not.
But you still should be more respectful to them.
I didn't have.
You should still be more respectful to the plans and developers. You still should be more respectful.
For the past four, two months or something, he refused to change the site plan or anything.
He said it three times.
Okay, we're not going to have a debate.
Not, not like he, yes, he changed it, but not too well, not too well. Today's site plan was terrific.
But last week you seen it more.
And we agreed with him.
All right. And it's not going to be a kumbaya, everybody, everybody has to work together at the meeting and that's what we're after. And it's unfortunate that it appears there's places with sections or fractions, but that's not my desire. It's not that we give us all the things. All right, so are there any other items to be brought forward?
I do have one concern that just came, and I've got to ask the planner for some help on this one. HRC, one of the things we talked about on the sixteenth, big item, by the way, is the signage for Evergreen Row, okay? The meeting that.
The power point, the five slides, period of the signs?
Yes, yes.
And then all the locations of which will go where when we were at the show with the council?
Okay. And that was one of the items for the sixteenth thing. But my understanding is HRC would like a little more time than to discuss other details of the project. This is for Lee Schultz today, and I was kind of very busy today, so I didn't get all the detail. So we might be asking to look or stretch the schedule even a little bit more. I don't know how much flexibility there is, if any, to talk about another meeting before the sixteenth. But I don't have, I'm kind of wobbly on the details here. But the purpose would be one last look at the whole project before they send it to the final, I guess, authorities.
And again, I was kind of on the outside looking in, but my understanding was the council wanted to see a review of the details. And I think that's what the plan is, for the engineer to bring back some of the details before council.
This is sixteenth going to work though.
I think you can, yes, I do. We're going to have a meeting Wednesday to review what's going to be discussed.
All right, so.
I'm sure we can have an answer for you by Thursday.
It'll have to work, that, yeah.
Is that post-signs or construction signs?
Those are like entryway signs.
They're going to go through a whole bunch of details.
You have the control of the first sign, right?
The permit signs, not the permit signs?
Wayfinding.
Wayfinding signs and signs at the entrances to the municipal complex and at the gateway entrances, I believe.
All right.
We're going to bring that back to the council.
But there was some concern whether the sixteenth would give the engineers enough time. If council had input, wanted to change something.
That's true too. But we're going to, I think we're meeting with the sign designer on Wednesday to review.
All right, so.
So we could have an answer Tuesday.
We have to have an emergency situation. I'll get this solved by tomorrow. I'm kind of wobbling on my, I just don't want us to, I want council and mayor and all parties to understand totally the project, to have seen it all one more time, so. So anyway, I'll, I'll discuss it if there's a need to, to have a special meeting or something. I hope not, but I want to make sure there's enough time there for any changes to be incorporated.
Just a brief question. Will, will that puddle of water that happens every time it rains in the circle be corrected when we do Evergreen Row?
All the issues.
My fault. It's a, you know, every time it rains, it's.
Not a rain guard, something.
Because I, you know, we need to look at.
I could have a stronger system.
Make sure, make sure he's in here.
Yeah.
This meeting is still, this meeting is still in order.
Yeah, I did get a second telephone call and that has to do with a fellow that runs up down Beach Road. He said there are two places by the new bridge on Beach that the road allows the water to stand there and it freezes. And he said, in one place it runs out on the road, it freezes. And one is on the south end of the bridge and the other one, I think he said is on the north side of the bridge. But, he said you could see, you can see the shadow of where the water has set on the road.
But. Could I ask the gentleman's name and phone number?
Yeah, I can, I can give it to you tomorrow.
Great, yeah. Pardon? That's our, that's one of our, one of our, the lies projects. We don't want people taking, breaking legs over there.
Yeah, and the point that he was making was that this happened once before and he tried to, not on that place, someplace else, he tried to tell members of the city that it wasn't done properly. And by the time they got down to the people that had to do the work, the warranty was up. So the city had to, had to stand the cost of fixing it, which is, means we just paid for it twice. So he says, I don't want the same thing to happen at this bridge. I'll, I'll get that to you tomorrow.
Okay.